To the Monday, March 8th, meeting of the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council. This meeting is taking place via Zoom teleconference in order to give public comment or listen to the meeting, you can call 1-301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 874-1094-9992, and the password is 321512. And once you enter, you will be placed on mute. Okay, so first order of business is to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right, so, uh, public comments this evening are limited to three minutes per person. Please alert staff that you would like to make a public comment by pressing star nine to raise your hand. Keep in mind, items not on the agenda, maybe deferred or referred to staff, you know, until those future meetings. So, carry any public comments this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, so then the first item of business is our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from February 22nd, 2021, and then the appointment of Jeanette Nichols to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term, expiring March 2024. Any?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
A second.
Two seconds. Pick one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the consent agenda is approved, and our patience paid off by securing Jeanie Nichols for that position. I think it's really awesome, so I'm looking forward to it. Okay, and our next item is the unfinished business of the public hearing on the consider and discuss and act on ordinance number 2021-02, and this was for the official, officially making the Sykesville Parks and Rec Committee a town commission. So, we introduced it at the last meeting, so I guess if there's not any, if there's any public comments, certainly, I guess, take those now. And is there any council questions or comments?
No.
Is any, so, can we get a motion to?
I'm gonna let Anna do that.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-02, adopting the, um, making Parks and Rec a commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it's good to finally have that official. So, um, all right, so our next item is new business, and this is to consider and discuss and act on resolution 2021-02, and this is for alcohol at the Sipping on Summer DSC event. Um, and I don't know, Leo, did you want to share some, any, any info on this, or?
Yeah, just a little bit, it's an added event this year. It's gonna be a, I'm reading the notes, a large block party type of event, just having hard seltzer and summer beers. Uh, it'll be a ticketed event because we have to limit crowd size, there'll be a DJ, food trucks and vendors, but it'll be limited in size because of the restrictions that we're still under. But it's a new event, we've added it sort of at the last minute, but we're trying to make up for all of last year.
Yeah, this was, this was the event that was, uh, scheduled to be the St. Patrick's Day event that got moved to, uh, to later in July, so.
Okay, great. And it's probably not looking like the wine festival's gonna go off on as scheduled either, right?
Actually, that's got a chance. Julie's been in touch with the county health department to do a safety plan, and Jared probably can talk about this stuff as well. Um, it'll be definitely a smaller version, but we're looking to see if we could do something similar to what we're doing with this, um, Sipping on the Summer thing, ticketed events, limited number of people, but still, um, being able to pull it off.
Okay. Well, that's kind of good news. All right, and then, um, so do we need to adopt this ordinance, this resolution, right? We need to approve this?
That's correct.
Okay, so, can somebody make a motion to approve the?
I will.
Okay.
Um, so I make, oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Hold on one second, sorry, I jumped too soon.
It's okay, it's the resolution, yep.
Yes, I make a motion to pass resolution 2021-02, and I'm looking for the title.
Alcohol at the Sippin' on Summer DSC event.
So moved, thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great, so the resolution is adopted, which brings us to our announcements and reports. So our next Mayor and Town Council meeting will be Monday, March 22nd, 2021. This too will be a Zoom meeting, and, uh, that should be an interesting one because we got all the election stuff, so I think we're gonna do that at the meeting. I know there was some discussion of maybe doing that prior, but I think, uh, we're just gonna do that at the beginning of the meeting, I think like we've done in the past, should be, be pretty easy to handle. Um, and then we have volunteer opportunities at the, at Spark, the Police Auxiliary, and the Crossing Guard, so be a good time to get up to speed for the Crossing Guard, because you know, it's not real busy right now, you can get some training. And you can email town@sykesville.net for more information about volunteering with the town. Um, the town is accepting nominations for council and mayor. Nomination forms can be found on the town website at townofsykesville.org. Nominations will also be taken at the council meeting on March 22nd, 2021. And that brings us to our staff updates. So Joe, do you want to start with the staff updates?
Sure, sure, Mayor, just a couple of quick things, again, just to remind everybody that the comprehensive plan is out for public comment. We did enter that 60-day public, uh, public review period, uh, on March 1st, where the Planning Commission had the, uh, the presentation from our consultants. So again, it is out for, uh, for public comment. If, uh, any member of the public council or otherwise wants to review the document and send any comments, positive, negative, or otherwise, uh, please just send it to town@sykesville.net, uh, and we'll make sure we try to address, uh, any public input that we get over this, uh, the 60-day period. Uh, so the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the document on May 3rd, and then at that meeting, they'll make a recommendation, uh, to either adopt or not adopt to the city council. Um, other than that, uh, there's no real update on any efforts by Warfield. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that most of their efforts have been taken up by attempting to, uh, secure this, uh, this catalytic revitalization, uh, income tax credit, uh, through the state, so they're working with, uh, Senator Hester on getting this bill approved. I do know, uh, that bill did have a Budget and Finance Committee hearing last week. Uh, I don't believe it's been scheduled out of committee just yet, but we're keeping an eye on that to see, um, what kind of progress that can make this, this legislative session. Um, I do know if it does pass, it will certainly help them with their, uh, with the issues they have, uh, making that project work from a, from a financing standpoint, uh, you know, this, this catalytic, uh, income tax credit that they're looking for is up to, I believe as drafted, it's a $10 million credit, but, um, you know, we'll see what happens if it comes out of committee, if they make any changes to that. So I know most of their efforts have been focused on, on getting that bill passed. And then finally, just FY22 budget, again, we've started to do the preliminary work, uh, behind the scenes, at least on a staff level, still a lot of work to do, I still have lots of meetings to do with, uh, with staff on that, um, but we want to get it on everybody's radar that we're gonna try to, looks like we're gonna introduce that at the April 12th council meeting, so keep that on your radar, that, uh, be looking for the, uh, the draft FY22 budget, uh, to be introduced around that time. Then other than that, uh, we'll, we'll jump into the Chargers report, Mayor.
You got it. So Craig, you're up.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Good to see everybody. I'm gonna present the February Treasury Report. Two weeks ago, we did January, now I got February out pretty quickly, so I felt good about that, to get that ready for tonight. Um, things are still rolling along, we're doing really well with the revenue, um, we're still ahead, you know, the budget's still ahead of expenditures, which obviously is important, keep that going. Um, we actually had a, more of a pickup this month, you know, in terms of last month, uh, we got like 188,000 in, uh, state income taxes, which was really helpful, uh, we got another 40 grand in, in property taxes, and then we got a 31,000 in highway user revenue, which I think gives you a recall, a couple of weeks ago, I was kind of hedging and worrying and a little kind of concerned about that, uh, but we did get another payment in for 31, so it's getting us there, and then, to be honest, you'll see it on the report, but we also got another 29 in just a couple of days ago, which represents through, uh, December, so, uh, we're, we're making ground on that, so it's good to see it's starting to come in now, uh, we're about halfway what we projected, so a lot, lot better than it was a couple of months ago in December, so obviously quite, quite happy about that myself. Uh, in terms of expenses, you know, just kind of your general normal flow, uh, nothing out of the ordinary right now, I think the only thing you may have, if you looked at the check register, I, or the, uh, statement of revenue expenses, I did pay, we paid the Raincliff trash rebate, which is about 14.5,000 dollars, uh, usually it's due at the end of January, so I got it off just a little late, but I'm sure they're not gonna complain about that, but that's an annual payment, so you'll only see that one time around, so if you happen to see that. As well, if you're looking at the check register, you might have seen two health insurance payments, just because of the timing of how one of them came in, that, because they're usually paid in advance, uh, the February actually came in late, uh, courtesy of the mail, uh, and then, so I had to make two payments, obviously, in February to catch us up, to have us now in advance for March. Um, other than that, I really don't have any other major points to make. If anyone has any, uh, questions, feel free to shoot them at me, if not, uh, I'd like to present the February Treasury Report this time for your approval.
Craig, I have a quick question.
Sure.
With all the conversions of our lights throughout town to LED, have you noticed a decrease in the cost?
Uh, it's a really good question, Anna, and it's funny, I've been working with Jared, the consultant who obviously worked on this project, and I really haven't seen that great of a change yet, which is to me, I'm like, wait a minute, why did we go through all this? So he has, um, looking at it, I mean, he's like contacted at least five individuals at, uh, you know, BG&E, and trying to ascertain what's going on, like, why aren't we seeing the bills, you know, drop at least like 15, 20%? And, um, they're promising to get back to us, and they, they agree that there should be a change, so, but, uh, we haven't seen it yet for some reason.
And they answered that, uh, Anna, so in the first round, we dropped down about $1,000, right, from the first round, and that's when BG&E did their upgrade, right? So, um, we're expecting that to drop significantly now that we've done the rest of the upgrade, but, and it, it will be retroactive, once they figure it out. I don't think they've adjusted it for all the bulbs, because they go by how many different bulbs, of how many different styles of lighting you have, and to Craig's point, we're feeling like they haven't went through and updated that to the LED changeover yet, but it will be retroactive, so I know they're looking into it, and whatever, from the time they installed them, from the time that they figure it out, we would get the credit for that, so we're not like gonna lose the money if they, once they get it all worked out, but yeah.
Like there's a meter for them to read, is what you're saying, Mayor?
No, there's no, that's the, the thing that stinks with those, there's no meter.
That's right.
So, so they just go by how many types of bulbs, which, how many use certain different levels of energy, and then how long they're on, yeah.
I have a feeling somebody just hasn't entered the right information in the right location yet, and, um, because we should be seeing over 20, we should be seeing over 20 grand of savings over the course of, uh, right, 12-month period, so.
It should be huge, I mean, we dropped, like I said, when they did 125 bulbs, we dropped $1,000 a month, because that's, you know, the check is, is different than by a thousand bucks, so I was, that's when we really got excited about switching these other ones out, so I'm with you, it should be pretty significant, and then the good news is, hopefully we'll get like a, a big lump credit all at once when they figure it all out, you know, so, so that's a great question, though.
We're, we're not gonna let it drop, we're not gonna let the ball drop, we're on it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Craig?
Motion to approve the February 2021 Treasury Report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Craig, thanks a lot for getting that all wrapped up in time, sure do appreciate it.
No problem, appreciate it.
Okay, and that brings us in up to a public safety report, Chief, you're up.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, we're gonna talk about the public safety report covering basically 12 days, February 16th through the 28th, um, not a whole lot to talk about here, other than, uh, you'll see, um, four assist other agencies, just only two community policing events, uh, seven foot patrols, which I'm hoping will, will pick up now that the weather's finally starting to warm off a little bit, um, 199 patrol checks, as you can see, 23 traffic enforcement initiatives, for a total of 295 events for, for those 12 days. We also had, I think, only six incident reports, which, which are in your packet. Um, so, people weren't happy to answer any questions you may have about any of this, but that's about it.
Chief, just one, I, I, I saw the swatting event in there, so did they, is there a way to track them at all? I mean, do they, how do they track those and investigate those things?
Well, that one was outside of town, of course, but, um, I don't know that they're tracked, to be very honest with you, um, that's a good question. I mean, I know that if we had them happening within town limits, it would certainly be something that I would want to keep an eye on and, and track, but as you know, it's something that goes on all over the country, and, you know, it's, fortunately, we haven't seen too many of them here in this area yet, so that's, that's a good thing.
I mean, does 911, like, try to track down where that call came from, and then, or whatever?
They do everything they can to investigate, and certainly, you know, if they can bring charges against anyone that's, that's knowingly, you know, files a false report like that, but, um, you know, oftentimes, they can't always identify, you know, specifically who, who placed the call.
Right, right, I got you. Yeah, just, just things always worry me about being so dangerous.
Absolutely, yeah, put a lot of people at risk.
Right, right, that was my only question, any other questions for the chief?
I do, I have a question, Chief, in light of the Wichita thing, I know there's nothing you can do, you, you already addressed that, but that was my question, to allay people's fears, you know, I call in and you say, oh, Godzilla's attacking my house, you need to send a SWAT team, uh, obviously, that would be ridiculous, but my question is, is there anything we can do to say, tell me more, while, while you guys are rolling? I guess my question is, could you allay people's fears to say, at least we checked to make sure Godzilla's not at your house before we start shooting?
Sure. Well, that would come down to the, the training of the dispatcher, you know, as, as you know, we don't, we don't have a dispatcher or CAD here in town, but those, you know, with the Sheriff's Department or State Police, those dispatchers should be trained in answering and asking all of those very same questions, trying to get as much information as possible, um, so that if it seems like it could be a false report, that they maybe slow down the response somewhat, um, so that we don't have, you know, a dozen cops going full tilt to, to the scene and, and end up being all for naught. So, yeah, it would come down to the training of the dispatcher, and they do receive those, the training in those, those areas to, to ask those kind of questions, try to keep the caller on the line and so forth, so, um, there's, there's lots that can be done on that end.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and, and, uh, Chief, I just wanted to thank you for, uh, you know, the, Chief's done a great job of, of putting out some, uh, stuff for our legislators, it's been super helpful, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from it, from them, for, um, you know, based on some of these bills that have been floated out, and then, uh, you know, I think you're one of the few people that are doing it, so thank you very, I think it really makes a difference, and they've really appreciated it, um, to understand municipal policing, so it's been helpful.
We're fighting the fight, but it, it looks like a losing battle for us at this point.
Yeah, it's difficult environment we're in, so, but I, I think they really do appreciate having the small-town policing input, and I think it does help make a difference on the overall decisions, so I really do appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for the chief?
Oh, and I did want to let you all know, especially Stacy, that, uh, we've, we've done a lot of work on our new website, thanks to her, and, uh, we should be going live within the next week or so, so we'll be sure and let you all know when it's, when it's live, so you can jump on there and check it out, and, and let us know, uh, you know, give us your input on it, but thanks again.
That's wonderful, Chief, it's well deserved, and, and I, I hope it, uh, it goes as smoothly as the process has thus far, when you actually go live, so.
Appreciate that.
Good deal.
Full new cars with the new logo and everything on it, it'll be prominently featured. Good man. Okay, um, I guess that's it for the chief, so, council committee reports. Mark, you're at the top of my screen, we'll start with you tonight, anything from Planning Commission?
Well, obviously, you know, the comprehensive plan has been released, we got, uh, one person who sent some very thoughtful ideas, the Planning Commission voting members are reviewing it and hope to have their input in by the end of the month. The only thing that kind of surprised several people was a report from the county stating that, um, the, um, some rezoning was done, and, um, the one that kind of took us by surprise, I'm calling it up here, was that the, um, the photo property was rezoned from conservation to light industrial, that seemed to be something that took a lot of people by surprise.
Mark, I hate to interrupt you, what property was that again?
Oh, the photo property.
Okay.
It's outside the city limits, so it's not directly affecting us, but the concern was that our Planning Commission did put forth an opinion, and that opinion was not taken, um, as seriously as we would have liked, that's our only concern with that. It's not really our fight, but we're, we're concerned that we make a statement of position, and then it didn't stick, but, um, there may be reasons, but other than that, um, everything else went as we expected, and, uh, to the members of the, uh, to the council and to the mayor, um, I think the document they put forward and the comprehensive plan is good, but, um, I do think it would be better for us to, uh, point ourselves with it, because that's what we're gonna be living with for 10 years, and I think you'll like what you see, and that's.
And, Mark, now that I'm familiar with the property, because I didn't hear you and I was stuck on that, what was the zoning changed from?
Oh, I'm, you must have dropped out, it went from conservation to light industrial.
That's what I thought, thank you.
And we did not ask for that, we recommended against it.
It's been kind of used as light industrial, so I think they were trying to change it to, to fit with the use, and, yeah, it, it was a county, so, yeah, there's probably a lot of things we're not privy to, but, um, I appreciate the comments.
A question, Mark, for you in reference to the comprehensive plan, are we going to have, and maybe this is more for Joe, are we gonna have a working session in reference to that, or, or any other public debate in reference to the future of the town?
And I would defer to Joe and Jenna on that, I would, I would think that, um, for those who have not been looking at it from as I have, it's probably a good idea, um, if we do, I'd be certain to attend anyway, but, um, I don't know what they had planned. Joe, Jenna, what do you think?
Yeah, I think with the Planning Commission, uh, we've kind of set a deadline for Planning Commission to get their review, uh, at least, you know, somewhat complete by the end of this month, so that at their meeting on, I believe it's April 5th, is the, is the April Planning Commission meeting, uh, that they can debate some of their comments and make changes, and then once those comments are, are addressed, or at least, uh, at, at least discussed, is when we can bring it then to council and have some sort of workshop or open discussion about it, so that by the time you guys see it, uh, you know, sometime after May 3rd, um, that any comments you might have can, can be incorporated into that document.
Thank you.
And to your point, I think so, review it now, and if you have comments, send them to Joe, you know, now, so they can start incorporating them into the discussions, I think it'd be helpful, you know, and then help the process, so, you know, review it at your guys' leisure, and then kind of send any comments, questions to Joe, and then he can maybe even share them with the Planning Commission in April, which would be helpful for the process.
I was gonna say, if we can get them to him before the April 5th meeting, that would probably be.
Yes.
Most prudent.
Probably be most, yeah, productive, yeah.
And if anybody wants to discuss the document, I'm happy to, you know, take some time and and work through it, if you have any, you know, uh, you know, quick reactions to it, or just, just questions that are bugging you that, that you want answers to, you know, sooner rather than later, by all means, just give me a call.
And it's kind of like a framework, you know, that's the other thing to remember, too, it's, it's everything you're seeing in there is not like set in stone, this is a framework, it's a map, you know, for the future, and as we head into the future, we're gonna, you know, the map, the, the, it's gonna change a little bit, but this is a framework guideline for our next 10 years, so it's not, you don't, I wouldn't sweat thinking like everything you see in there is gonna be exactly as it's shown, it's a, it's a guide map for us for the next 10 years, you know, so, but by all means, get your, you know, thoughts and comments out there now, and hopefully we'll have a, we'll end up with a pretty good plan, I think a lot of people spent a lot of time working on it, and, um, getting us to where we are now, so I think it's been pretty good, but, um, we'll keep tweaking and adjusting, and it'll certainly evolve as, over the next 10 years, too.
So, another question that I have in reference to it is that, Joe, you mentioned earlier that we're looking to have the first submission of the budget around early April, and then we're looking at this master plan sometime in early May, are we looking to bring those two documents together, so that we can, if there's money available, start to address some of the issues? Is that something that we're gonna talk about maybe in later part of May, or is there another timeframe?
Or, or mid-April, there, there's certainly some, some opportunities for that, and again, we, we want to try to keep them on, on parallel paths, so we can do exactly what you referenced, and as we start working through the comprehensive plan, if there's, if there's items that we know we want to go ahead and attempt to budget for, uh, in the operating budget of FY22, then we can go ahead and still make those additions.
Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, so, all right, so next, Jeremiah, you're on my screen next, so.
I actually don't have anything for, uh, the group tonight, uh, we met at the Maryland Municipal League this last week, um, but we don't plan to meet again with that group until next week, we're at a, a stage in the legislative cycle where we've now reviewed the vast majority of the bills, um, and we have, I have not met with the, uh, Raincliff Homeowners Association, uh, over the last couple of months, so, that's all.
Okay, and then Stacy, you're up next.
Thank you.
Mark.
Good deal, so, um, Sykesville Parks and Rec, uh, met, uh, last week, I'm sorry, um, a few days after our last town council meeting, and at that meeting, we, uh, finalized our Spark Events calendar, um, and hammered out some details for a modified version of our annual Easter egg hunt, it's gonna be pretty exciting, it's COVID-friendly, um, the Easter egg, or the Easter bunny will be on hand, uh, to hand out a, a to-go bag for the kiddos, um, and in there will be some, um, instructions to participate in our, follow me now, I'm gonna say this slowly, in our scav eggger hunt that we're going to be doing, um, and that will be April 2nd at 10:00 AM at Miller Cooper Park is where the bunny will be, and where the instructions will be handed out, but, um, it'll be a, an egg hunt that will take place across, um, multiple parks, and, uh, hopefully we'll, um, spread everyone out over the course of several days, and there'll be a prize at the end for the, for those that, uh, collect all of the, the eggs, um, and so that'll be fully explained at the time of the Easter bunny visit with the to-go bag. Um, we also, uh, have, I wanted to re-announce the, uh, annual Spark-sponsored park cleanup, uh, that's April 24th, uh, we'll have another one in the fall, location to be determined at this point, and we hammered out our Movies in the Park, uh, titles, and, uh, also spoke of, um, sponsorship for the Movies in the Park, uh, our local business owners oftentimes are very helpful, um, and participate in sponsoring our Movies in the Park series, and, uh, we had decided, given the, um, economic climate, um, with COVID, I had suggested that the town be the, uh, major sponsor for, for that, for that, uh, series this, this summer, and we are still hammering out, uh, details for our musical fest, music festival, but that is also right now slated to be October 2, it'll be an all-day event instead of multiple, um, uh, multiple concerts throughout the summer, uh, we're gonna do a one-time music fest, see how that goes this year, and that again is October 2nd. Um, and I guess that's enough information for now, um, I think I touched on everything. Janet, do you want to mention, uh, what was determined for, did we pick a placement for that buddy bench?
Um, Cooper Park.
That's what I thought was, I didn't take, I know we batted that around.
Near the new playground.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that buddy bench is, uh, something I discussed or mentioned to you guys a couple of meetings ago, that the local Girl Scout troop, um, is, uh, going to have fabricated. um, is, uh, going to have fabricated because of their participation in the bottle cap, plastic bottle cap, um, recycling program. That's it for Spark.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, let me scoot in a little bit. Uh, Al, you're up next.
All right, thank you. Uh, the merchants met February, let me see here, February twenty-sixth, it was a good meeting. Uh, just some highlights of the meeting. They voted to repair the, uh, DSC tent. Uh, put some funds up for that. It was damaged in a windstorm, I guess. Uh, they talked about the second wave of, uh, relief for the rent program that the DSC, uh, is offering through that grant. Uh, there was talking, talk, planning about the shiver shuffle that was ran on Sunday, February twenty-eighth. And, uh, Chief, I forgot to mention, but, uh, I actually did run that race. And, uh, the, the officers did a great job on that day. It was, uh, it was pretty miserable. So I appreciated them reviving me at mile two.
Glad you made it.
Yeah, it was good. It was a good race. It was, it was, it was miserable weather out, but I think it was about a hundred and twenty people down there. Just, it was, uh, well-run, very well-run. So uh, thanks for that. Um, March, uh, today, uh, Sykesville downtown is, the small businesses are offering deals through the Main Street Specials app that came out. I'm, I'm not exactly sure where that is found. But, uh, I'm sure, uh, some of the, some of the merchants are participating in that. That's, they talked about that and how that was gonna work. I'm sure there'll be, uh, if it's working out for some businesses, I'm sure, uh, some more businesses will join in. Uh, they talked about St. Patty's Day Bingo, uh, which will be happening in March twenty-seventh. Or I'm sorry, March seventeenth. The coupons are good to the twenty-seventh. And then, um, some other o- off events, uh, Storybook Character Night, uh, May twenty-first, just talking about that. And, uh, also, uh, June thirteenth is a Pride Day celebration the Main Street merchants are going with. Uh, they talked about Easter and some other specials that all the merchants were having and the next meeting will be March twenty-sixth. Lot of good stuff.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it sounds like it's getting ready to be a robust spring season. So it's a good time. All right, Anna, you're up next. Uh, HDC, Historic District Commission.
We have not had a meeting since our last mayor and town council meeting. Our next meeting is sl- slated for the end of the month, March, uh, March twenty-second, twenty-third, I'm sorry, Tuesday, March twenty-third. I don't know if we have any applications. Carrie, can you comment on that?
We might have one. We're waiting for some more info from them.
Okay, so if we have one, we'll definitely announce it. Everybody will know, seven o'clock, Tuesday, March twenty-third. Um, and then I had actually spoken with Joe this morning about possibly getting some training from the Maryland Historical Trust. Because there's quite a few of us that are somewhat new to the commission and I thought that it might be a good idea if we get some training um, on the process, not necessarily the processes, but the, um, definitions of historical trust and historical pres- preservation. So Joe's gonna let us know if there's any type of training that's available. Um, other than that, just look out to see if there's gonna be a meeting scheduled for the twenty-third.
Bravo on that, Anna. That's good thinking.
Yep, no, and we already actually, so it's funny because all this stuff sort of flows together. We had talked to Elizabeth Hughes and I asked her about that exact thing and she said yes and, and God gave us some resource for that. So we do have a contact for that. And, um, we'll put you in, connect that with you. Yeah, so, because I have something I asked about. It is a resource available. And, um, we'll get that set up. So, um, that's great question and good timing.
Is that a free resource, Mayor, or is that something the town has to pay?
No, I believe it's free. She didn't indicate, and then Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong. She indicated to me that it was a, a resource they're willing to provide, you know, uh, to us and she gave us a contact, uh, at that, uh, discussion, you know, for that. So yeah, because I, I absolutely, I, I was like, we're gonna need some of this, you know what I mean? So it was something that came up and, uh, yeah, because we got it cut now that we're gonna be sort of the gatekeepers for the historic preservation at Warfield. You know, there's not a backstop anymore, you know, on some of this stuff. So I, there was a question that came up was we're gonna need maybe a little more next level training. So, uh, it's a great time, yeah, so.
I, uh, and I don't have a need for it, but if it's, if it's not gonna cost the town, I'd like to learn more about it just for the future, so.
Sure. Yeah, I think anybody could participate, you know, so we'll coordinate that, work with Joe and get, get that, uh, reach out to her and see with that contact and get stuff set up for us. And I'll coordinate with the Historic District Commission, but I think the timing's good.
And Anna, I don't mean to step on your toes at all, but a thought is, is that, uh, we create an orientation process for folks that come on that are new, uh, to that process or, and then we could clarify what that means, last three years, last two years, last whatever it is. Um, so that we could actually make sure that we go and get this training for the new members. Um, I'm, I'm especially concerned in reference to the Warfield property myself and not having that backstop available. Um, and so just something to think about that maybe is a town process to, to ponder. Maybe you can talk about it with the other people there.
Absolutely. And I know that there are, um, there's gonna be a need for updating our, uh, historical preservation guidelines, yes, because it's been written back in nineteen ninety-eight and there's a lot of products that are now new to the industry that we didn't know about. And, um, at this point, if somebody presents something and they, they're like, well, we have this new product out, especially like windows, it's not listed in the guidelines, so we, at this point, would have to say no until those guidelines are updated. And I know that when the Maryland Historical Trust easement was removed, Joe and I had a conversation about having a consultant at our, um, disposal. So that's also a- availability to us, but it would be nice that we all have the.
Right. And, and then keep in mind, too, uh, to Jeremiah's point, although the, the legislative or legal backstops gone, they've offered to be a resource to us as needed, you know, so you know, the HDC can reach out to them as needed and get guidance and help. And, uh, and I think maybe what we could do is record that. You know, that presentation and that training would be nice to maybe, and then have that available for people. If we get new people to come on to watch at least, you know, the, that presentation so they can sort of familiarize themselves with the process. That might be a good idea for it, too. We could keep that for us once we get some training and stuff soon.
It just seems like something that we should do since we're gonna be the accountable officials for making our own decisions, so.
Agreed. Okay. All right, any other questions for Anna? Comments? Okay, all right. Uh, Leo, you're, you're up next.
Yeah, for DSC, uh, part of it's what I've already talked about, the Sipping on Summer Block Party on July thirty-first is being planned. Uh, we're still hoping to go with the Art and Wine Festival on May twenty-second. It'll be a smaller event than what we've had in the past, but we're really hoping to pull it off this season. Either last meeting or the meeting before, uh, you heard about the state grant that we received to distribute to businesses in Sykesville for rent relief. Um, about twenty-five thousand has been distributed so far in the first round of applications. And as Al mentioned, the second round of applications will start next Monday and there's another thirty-seven thousand dollars in the grant for that. Um, so that's really great that Julie was able to get that from the state to help with our, um, Sykesville businesses. Um, she's also gonna be taking a, or is currently taking a, um, class through nonprofit.gov to help us manage our nonprofit now that we are newly established as a nonprofit. As well as she's enrolled in a fundraising boot camp. We're gonna continue to seek more grant funds. The plannings for the, um, Sipping on Summer, the farmer's market and the uh, Fourth of July Parade are going well. I hope to have more information for all that next meeting. And on March twenty-seventh, there is a new event. It's called Plogging. Um, it is picking up litter while jogging. So maybe Al can do this one as well. Um, March twenty-seventh, one o'clock at the Fountain Park. It's going to be a litter pickup and jogging event.
So Leo, you weren't there, so that was not jogging what I was doing. I was shuffling, shuffling.
It, it definitely wouldn't have been me either, so.
Actually, I might like the plogging event, because then you can, uh, you don't have to go, you could stop. I'm picking up trash over here. While you're trying to regain consciousness.
It is, it is the perfect, uh, activity for the, uh, running activity for those that really don't like to run. But at the same time, it's a great activity for those that do like to run, to bring a partner with them to collect their piles of trash for them while they continue to run between piles. So it's great. And there's also gonna be a cigarette butt collection portion to that, too. That's, uh, that part of the event is called No Butts About It. It takes, um, about a hundred and fifty years for a cigarette butt to totally decompose while it leaches all of the horrible toxins in the filters into the ground and groundwater and our oceans. So pick up them butts.
Got it. So you can get your butt moving and get some butts. There you go. All right, that's awesome.
We have our, um, we have a, uh, retreat, virtual retreat this Saturday from ten o'clock on, probably go most of the day, but it's our annual retreat, but we're doing it virtually this year.
Okay. Any, any other, any questions for Leo or? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, and then, um, for the gatehouse, so, um, the exhibit is completed for the George Leakens Junior World War Two Soldier Exhibit, so it's under Exhibits. Can check it out. Um, it's pretty interesting, man. He was, he's, he stormed the beach at Omaha. Luckily, he wasn't in the first round of bullets, but, um, he had a metal plate in his head and it's a pretty interesting story. So, and then when it would get cold and hot, he would get different headaches and stuff, uh, so, and then he worked at Harris's Department Store right on Main Street for many years. So interesting little story. It's easy to read to check out the exhibit, so you will check it out on the website. We're still working on getting the, uh, floor squared away. I think maybe Derek will be able to help at the, uh, colored schoolhouse and they haven't had a whole lot of activities, so we're trying to get that done before, um, the homework club starts back up again and hopefully, uh, the schoolhouse can open up to the kids as COVID recedes. And, um, oh, and today's International Women's Day, so celebrate all the women in your life. It, it was started in nineteen oh nine, just four years after the town was, um, incorporated, so. Thank all those ladies in your life. And other than that, that's all I got. And I think we've covered all the committees, right? So that should be it, right? We need a motion to adjourn at this point, right?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so thank you, CMT, for all your help and support. Appreciate it. And, um, the meeting is adjourned.
Wonderful.